So it sounds like next year's capital.
Sounds like capital.
Capital.
I think he's on that.
He's got.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the City of Union Town's regular city council meeting, September 4th, 2025, council meeting. Rokehold.
Councilman Billy.
Here.
Councilman Thomas.
Here.
Councilman Winfrey.
Here.
Councilwoman Brown.
Here.
Mayor Gurke.
Here. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Let your faith lead us to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world for liberty, justice for all.
We have a special guest this evening, Rick Adibato from the Fayette EMS. Rick, if you take the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, thank you for inviting me this evening. I have some good news, and I hope everybody appreciates that. It's my sentiment of good news. Fayette EMS has been serving City of Union Town since the closing of Union Town Fireman's Ambulance Service, and I don't remember the exact date, but it's one of our busiest stations. Likewise, we had a station at South Union at the Fire Department. We have been looking for years to perhaps combine the two together. The City of Union Town has been gracious enough to house us with the Fire Department. The Fire Department, the chief, and his men have been very gracious. We always wanted to combine the two, and we were kind of put into the fast track of that whenever there was structural issues at the South Union Station that we rented off of South Union Volunteer Fire Department. So we start aggressively looking. The mayor, the councilman Billy, was at one of the meetings. We met with the redevelopment authority. We were trying to find a place that we could move into, and hopefully, we could find a place that we could build and combine the two stations together just for practical purposes of everything. Well, we ended up at 72 Coal Springs Street, at the old water company building. And over the last month, month and a half, we have spent a lot of time cleaning, and painting, and prepping the building. We had met with numerous neighbors, wanted to know what was going on, and been well received by the neighborhood. So for now, we weren't sure if this was going to suit us. We leased the building with an option to buy. So I can tell you for at least the next year and a half to two years for certain, because it takes a long time to build a building. Hopefully, we stay there. Again, we've had no problems there, and the response time difference is minuscule as far as that. We now have crews that rotate. We have both crews, both the South Union and the Union Town crews, along with our supervisor working out of that building. Some additional staff extra on daylight. Union Town and South Union and North Union are very busy. For example, the City of Union Town alone, in the first seven months, I'm sorry, I don't have August figures yet, we've done just in 911 calls in the city, 2052 911 calls for requests for assistance. So it's a busy site. I've had to caution my people, since we are in a residential neighborhood, to watch the sirens when you're coming out. But I mean, it's worked out real well. And the cooperation with the Police Department, the Fire Department, and us, at many times, you can't tell who's who, because we work so well together. And I see two gentlemen back there shaking their heads. We'd like to continue to serve the city. We hope this ends up being our permanent home. I think it's good for the neighborhood, and it's been good for us so far. And I just wanted to report that tonight to everybody, what was going on. And again, we appreciate housing us at a nominal fee at the Fire Department, and it's helped for years. But just wanted to make you aware that the changes that have taken place. When I talked to the mayor the other day, he says, why don't you come to city council? And I'm not the greatest public speaker, but I get through it. So anyhow, if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. If not, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Appreciate your service to us. Real quick, I just have one quick item to bring up before a meeting starts. We're having our biannual cleanup day on September 27th, from 9:00 to 1:00. It's a Saturday. We'll gather at the St. Paul's Lutheran Church in their parking lot on Gallatin Avenue, across from the District Magistrate's office. And we'll supply water, gloves, jackets. Just come out and we want to get our neighborhood cleaned up. And we'll set the stage. Pastor Winfrey and I, we make it a biannual event right around Union Town to look to see where the trouble spots are. We'll try to get those and just keep an eye on if you see something, you know, just bring it to our attention. And we'd like to make our city cleaner. It's been getting better each and every time, so we're going to continue trying to raise the barn, make our city look better and cleaner, and make everyone happy. But that's all I have this evening. Any comments on agenda items only?
And we will also note, this meeting was advertised as a public hearing on the petition for Mount Olivet Baptist Church, requesting the vacation of an unnamed alley. It's a 10-foot alley, unopened alley, but we're required by the Third Class City Code to advertise a public hearing and solicit any public comments on that request. So if there is any public comment on that request, it would be appropriate to offer it at this time as well. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tim. No questions? So at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Tim.
All right. We will go into the regular agenda items, being resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to receive the report of the treasurer for the month of August 2025, being the same as hereby received and filed. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to accept the minutes of the August 13th, 2025, regular council meeting, being the same as hereby accepted and filed. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, the council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the City of Union Town for the month of August 2025. August 2025 invoices, general fund totaled $123,516.20. Sewer fund totaled $124,846.45. Recreation fund, $1,175.70. Recycling, $4,973.6. Highway, $3,438.17. Off-street, $4,228.65. And library, $769.41. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to adopt Bill Number 1788, ordinance number, to become ordinance number 1768, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to conduct a right-of-way acquisition for the Jefferson Street Bridge project. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to adopt Bill Number 1789, to become ordinance 1769, an ordinance of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, vacating a portion of an unnamed 10-foot alley located in the City of Union Town, County of Fayette. And this is relating to the petition of Mount Olivet Baptist Church. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, the council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the City of Union Town for the month of August 2025. August 2025 invoices, general fund totaled $123,516.20. Sewer fund totaled $124,846.45. Recreation fund, $1,175.70. Recycling, $4,973.6. Highway, $3,438.17. Off-street, $4,228.65. And library, $769.41. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to adopt Bill Number 1788, ordinance number, to become ordinance number 1768, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to conduct a right-of-way acquisition for the Jefferson Street Bridge project. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to adopt Bill Number 1789, to become ordinance 1769, an ordinance of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, vacating a portion of an unnamed 10-foot alley located in the City of Union Town, County of Fayette. And this is relating to the petition of Mount Olivet Baptist Church. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
We will note that with one abstention, the resolution passes 401. Again, one abstention noted. Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to approve a 30-day application extension for the position of City of Union Town Police Officer as approved by the Civil Service Commissioner. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to accept the resignation of Greg Radinsky from the Union Town Parks and Recreation Board, effective July 19th, 2025. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Hang on one second.
Yep.
We were on these.
We are on the next one, following that one. It's the resignation.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Councilman Billy is a yes, and Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
And Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to approve the City of Union Town Community Day Event, sponsored by Nemecolon at Bailey Park, on September 18th, 2025. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to authorize landscaping services and purchase of mulch at Bailey Park Playground area, from Rollup Landscaping, to total $1,800. Councilman Billy?
I'm a yes for this, but in the future, I would like to complete these types of projects in the beginning of the year, so we can clear that off of the books, out of the rec board, or out of the rec fund.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to approve the services of debris removal and commercial grade sealant at the batting cage and basketball courts at Bailey Park from Bright Stripe, for $3,250. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to approve the purchase of seven signs outlining the park rules and regulations for city parks from Bor Signs and Company, for $2,300. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to authorize the purchase and installation of pinhole cameras at parking garage pay stations, to total $4,764.19. And that would be with hub parking technology. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to approve the purchase of weed killer concentrate from Producer Supply, for $526.06. Councilman Billy?
No.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to authorize the purchase of 50 Community Day T-shirts from Union Town Printing Press, for $450. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to approve the wage adjustment of sewage clerk Deb Brown, to a full-time rate of $14.07 per hour, effective September 8th, 2025. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, to approve the refund of $100 to Pangy's Pizza. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the German. You don't want to. Sorry about that, Mayor. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you, Tim. Okay, very good. We'll get to department reports, some code. Jamie?
I want everybody to say code. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Chief, general public. Success is not final. Failure is not fatal. It is the courage to continue that counts. Compliance is key. Now let's get down to business. Thank you landlords, county hauling, all of the dumpsters in Union Town that do have a permit. I have issued 20 to 25 sweep tickets since arriving. We have collected approximately $500 from those sweeps. Please, if you have a sweep ticket, make sure you pay the amount in a timely manner. I've posted 10 sewage notices. I am continuing to use iWorks and learning more each day. I've done five site inspections. Thank you to all the businesses who are complying with grass cutting. I'm trying to, I started from one end of East Fayette Street, and I'm working my way all the way to the end of East Fayette Street. It's a process. Believe me, it's a process. But every little thing counts. So if you cut your weeds in front, it makes the other person's property a little bit nicer. So I'm just letting you know, each thing that you do counts. It's appreciated. I've been around. What I do is I go around, and then I go around again. And if you comply, you get a that a boy, you know, or that a girl, you know, thanks for cutting your grass. But compliance, 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 I can't tell you how it is. This job is very stressful, and sometimes you get compliant, and sometimes you don't. But that's the way you have to deal with that. This job requires patience, follow-up, and consistency. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, please give me a call at 724-912-5505. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie, and your hard works. Appreciate it. Thank you. Redevelopment Authority, Ms. Simmons?
Good afternoon. I dropped off the agendas there. For the CDPG update, October 10th is the next quarterly meeting to review the status of the programs. The monitoring was complete, but now we have another monitoring for fair housing and equal opportunity, which was also submitted. Some other clarification will need submitted to the state for that monitoring as well. The 2025 public hearing will be September 23rd, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. That is where the city will make the announcement as to how the application will be submitted. Those applications are still under review, so we have several project requests that will be reviewed, and the city will make that determination. And as stated in the email earlier this week, I'll be sending those out. It was general consensus that an email would be okay, so I'll send out the details. The quick glance at the program, the code enforcement, just heard Jamie, great progress. She's doing a lot in iWork, and we are prepared to do her first salary reimbursement, so that'll happen probably in the next week or so. Blight demolition, we've made it past the environmental reviews, and now the evaluations are under review. As soon as those evaluations are completed, we'll be able to do the demolition of around six structures. Marshall Park is currently proposed as a multi-year project. The modification is under review. It's not been submitted quite yet, pending an estimate of the total work to be completed. So we want to lock that in, because we have to submit it with a modification, and we don't quite know if we, we won't have all the details until later, so that's when it'll be submitted. State Theater external rehabilitation, the MOU is complete. It's been submitted to the State Historic Preservation Office, and when we hear back, we should be able to finish the exempt form and get started on the rehab right away. 2025 competitive applications are still pending, but I did learn today that when we had the Sewage and Transportation Work Group meetings, that Johnny and Chris did put a sewage list together of sewage needs that can be reviewed and determined if they would be eligible for a future application. I didn't know that we had that list, or missed it. So we'll keep looking at that. The fair funding is kicking off. Winona Street, there are several properties there that we may be able to purchase and move forward with, so that's coming along. The URAP applications, the Union Town Housing Rehabilitation Assistance Program, we have BADA Environmental to conduct the lead rate on asbestos reviews, so we have about six properties that we're doing lead rate on asbestos reviews for. And we just recently was approved by the board to expand the service area for the 504 rehab application. Natasha Belazik is the program manager, and with her hard work, she's been able to really make a model program, and we're now offering that to the entire county, not only those in Union Town. So if you are in the county, you're over the age of 62, or you are lower income, you can possibly get a very low interest loan, 20-year loan at a 1% interest rate, or up to $10,000 in grand if you're over the age of 62. So reach out. We can get you on any type of list we have at the office. The landlord registration quarterly meeting is September 23rd, and you've probably heard, we also have the first hearing September 23rd, so we'll have a meeting at 5:00 for CDPG, and then we'll run over to community action, and we'll have a 6:00 meeting for the landlord quarterly meetings that we're holding. Those are going well. We've been processing, and we're receiving the registration fees and putting together the resources that's been proposed. iWork modules are all complete. We have Story Square is available for renting. You can utilize that space. We did submit the local share account in hopes to rehab the sidewalks, and Story Square is still going on. It actually is going to kick off in five minutes, so stopover to Story Square. I kind of adjusted how my report was. Everything I reported so far was either redevelopment authority or CDPG program. The city cooperation agreement is set up so that the redevelopment authority can assist the city with certain exhibits. You have entered into that cooperation agreement, and there are certain things that I'm approved to work on and be reimbursed per burden rate from the city, and that is what this section is. The sewage transportation, which is pending right now, because there's no survey with code, and comprehensive planning. That comprehensive plan is going to be reviewed September 10th by Planning Commission, and that draft is ready. We're providing final comments for the final draft, and then the city will have that. So that's near complete. There won't be any more hours towards the comprehensive planning process, and that's the LSA grant. The only hours would be as if you were to approve another exhibit. And then the Strategic Management Planning Program, there is a reimbursement ready for submission, but as I've informed City Council, the cooperation agreement is exhausted at this time. And so if the redevelopment authority continues to provide you staff to manage your grants, we would need to discuss an hourly burden rate or either an increased stipend. I do not foresee that it would be a lot of hours to finish up those grants, because it's only one open grant. But if the city would want to get our assistance in applying for the other grants, like recommendations from the comp plan or the stamp program, that would need to be reviewed separately. So we just want to make sure you're in good standing with the Strategic Management Planning Program. Our next RDA meeting is September 17th at 4:00 p.m. Any questions?
So I would like to comment on the cooperation agreement. So I am interested in talks, and I'm really interested in what we have for an hourly rate. And my concern with that is that we're not properly, or not properly, but we, either we didn't have enough time planned for this in the beginning. What I don't like to see is halfway through the year, we have exhausted those funds that were planned for that comprehensive plan. So I do understand that the seriousness and a timely matter to get this taken care of. The one thing I do have an issue with is allocating more money in the middle of the year, when we're getting really close to cutting off spending. But I am interested in getting together to do some talking. I really like to have the board, more board involvement as well with those discussions.
Like council involvement?
No, with the red.
With the redevelopment?
With the redevelopment board as well.
And I would add, the cooperation agreement, we took what we can get.
Yes.
There was no way that we were going to be able to organize the entire comprehensive planning process and kickoff for the strategic management plan for $10,000, which is equivalent to 120 hours. So we, the redevelopment authority has actually put more work that's not been actually reimbursed because of the better good of... because of the better good of the city, the city's needs. And we know we've identified that planning component as being important for the city, so it, it kind of helps all of us. But we wouldn't have otherwise exhausted that, but there was more work than what we were allotted. Any other questions? So if you wouldn't mind, oh, yes?
It's a simple question. Where would I find information on that in Story Square?
The re, uh, uniontownredevelopment.com/Story-Square.
Is everything I need to know on that site?
Everything is, you, you, um, you would submit a request and then once we get your request of what you're actually wanting to do, then we know what information we need to provide you. So online, they should have all your answers or you can give us a call. If it's, so, yes?
Are there guidelines posted that apply to the appropriate use of Story Square? That would be available on a case-by-case basis?
It is case by case, but there is a contract that, that everyone abides by and other, sometimes special conditions or, or, um, other requirements that, that may affect an event. And by that, I mean how many attendees that'd be or how long the time would be needed. Maybe they want to set up early. So there's some special conditions that would fall in place, but there is a contract that after a pre-application, a renter has to complete.
Now, I think, oh, but there's, so there's no guidelines that currently exist that establish procedural analysis for the redevelopment authorities to accept a proposal, is it done on an ad hoc basis?
Well, we have a packet of information that we follow. Whether it lays out the specific renter process, um, but usually it's as applications are submitted. But, but we do have an outlined process, I, as well, so.
Is there a, oh, I'm going to say mine, is there a definite review process as if I submit my information about renting? Who makes that final decision as to whether or not it can be rented?
There is an application process, it, it might not necessarily be in writing. We use a Jot Form process. Uh, the application is submitted as a pre-application that comes to myself as the executive director of the RDA. I review that. One area we like to be sure of is that events are apolitical. We do that for concerts, anything like that. We want, uh, inclusion, not division. And really, if there's any other indicators that would need reviewed, it's reviewed by the board. But I have the ability to approve a pre-application on my own. It doesn't go in front of the redevelopment authority. Um, unless there are special situations, like maybe they want a vehicle there or something like that. Anyways, that's submitted. And then once I make the approval, it then is forwarded to the mayor and city clerk for their review. And then the, the, they decide if it's approved. Once it's approved, it comes back to me and then that's when we put together the pricing and the agreement that is sent out to the renter. And then that's another online process that outlines the actual agreement. And, you know, you need to take your trash out and, and other rules, security deposit that you must abide by.
But approving a proposal, we get, is not done by the board? You are the ultimate decision maker upon whether or not a proposal is approved?
For the pre-application only, ultimately, it needs both approvals. So the final decision is made by the city because the city owns the stage and the redevelopment authority and their nonprofit owns the meeting space.
If the council then votes on, has the final authority for that, uh, do you present to council or publish that on the approval?
Usually what happens, especially if it's like a larger event, it comes in front of council because there's road closures and maybe there's banners and things. So, um, I usually help the renter place it on the city's agenda. But it really depends on the size of the event. If it's a birthday party, that's one thing, but a larger, several-day event, you know, takes that next step. But reach out, I'll give you the flyer for the rental of Story Square.
I, I just want to clarify, I got, I'm not, I'm not trying to be a hard minister, please don't take it this way. But it was my understanding that the city didn't have any decisions over Story Square because you of, you know, redevelopment authority owns that property.
We don't own the stage.
Oh, well, see, there's some type of confusion because I was told we, the city didn't have a say-so in whoever you rent out the stage to.
The stage is one thing. If we want to use the space, I assume that we have the permission to use space. We just can't use the stage if the city would choose not to. Thirty feet from the sta, thirty feet from State Theater, which goes to the stage, the city, that's the city's property. The sidewalks in front of this, in front of that property is owned by the city and, and we always keep that separation.
Well, I was told something different, so I don't know. There's like, there's a disconnect, there's, there's a definitely disconnect. So I was told something completely different, so thank you for that, for me, because I was told something completely different.
Would you really be in a situation where?
Not usually, we, we usually go through that process pretty smoothly and we still are and have been.
So I, so the, the confusion for that is, so you have the two separate parcels and whenever, whenever that, whenever Story Square was donated to or given, donated to the city by the Hardy family, that also came with an endowment. So to be able to receive that product, the city can't actually receive property like that or any type of endowment. So that was ran through the redevelopment authority, through the, for the, through the nonprofit of the redevelopment authority. This, the city does own the stage and that's why that there is always those little, you know, times where, you know, there is allows for that confusion. Generally, we are on the same page, although this year we had a little double booking in there that, that threw that off. But, you know, we've, we, you know, uh, through better communication through redevelopment authority and with the, the city administration office, you know, we're making plans that that doesn't happen in the future and we've already moved forward with the one event. Uh, it's unfortunate tonight that there wasn't an event that actually to make the agenda, which that will be on for next month. So that, uh, which is really unfortunate, uh, for that event. And I think that those events that are really important for the community, um, I don't agree with alcohol sales in the city, although we do make exemption for some events to do that. I'm not in total agreement with, with the alcohol sales.
How, how can you do that? Like, how can you say no alcohol sales but for certain events?
I agree with you. I, I, my personal feelings and view is, is no alcohol sales, but you find yourself in, in situations on council here where you, you know, you're, you find places where you're going to, you know, give and take. I see the importance of some of those events. Uh, I don't agree with alcohol, I don't support it. And there's been one event, two events, one event for sure is the Italian Festival and I was very outspoken about the Christmas, the, the, the Christmas event. It, it's not family-friendly and, and that's my view of, of that.
To my concern, isn't so much family-friendly and alcohol, it's the inconsistency. It's, it's some entities can do this and some cannot, that is, that is.
Well, I'm not aware, Crystal, if you, uh, uh, director, if you could, I don't, I don't recall any time in the past where, where someone was refused. Is there, can, can you think of any time that, that during your tenure here that we, we have refused an application for rental?
Not during my two years. Um, and I, I mentioned earlier that sometimes it's a little bit more lengthy process because it's larger, you know. There's things to consider when you're having a large event. When you're thinking three-day, four-day event, there's going to be thousands of people there. You know, we have to be sure to review their needs in their pre-application and make sure that we have EMS, we have a evacuation process and, you know, all those things are lined up. So, you know, sometimes it might not be as smooth as others. Or if it's an event that's happened every year, that's, uh, goes a little smoother too because we know what to expect, they already have a plan outlined, it's already all documented, they know the rules and, and we just move forward with it. But we've, we've only limited some booths that's set up for our concert series and that's only, we, we just don't allow campaigning booths.
Yeah, no political advertisement during any of these events, that's, that's a big thing.
Yes?
I have a question. Is the non-political rule posted anywhere at all?
I'd have to actually look at the original packet. I, I, I use it so much that I just don't have it off the top of my head, but we can certainly review the original packet. This year, we put in place an online application process. So I've just pulled it up online and you can click, submit your pre-application and then it just kind of says that our team will review it. So that packet that we, paper copy that we used isn't on there, we streamlined it for a rental process. But I can certainly read that to see what exclusions are.
I was just wondering, you know, is something as for political events, is that stopped or can we rent it right politically?
It's, we usually try not to have political events. We, we want inclusion, no separation, things like that.
So if I could, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, you know, af, after, after the solicitor had, um, you know, that is a violation, so that, that isn't something, we're not going to be able to limit that and that's not right, you know. So I want to retract that statement, you know, so, and that was cleared up by the solicitor right here, so, uh, no, there is no restriction on that.
What, what, what are you retracting?
What's being retracted?
Political, political language.
Okay.
Exclusion, exclusion for political events. Because of First Amendment concerns, we can't just express these through all political events. It becomes a question of what constitutes political, what doesn't constitute political. Could be inappropriate, unconstitutional viewpoint discrimination, so that's why you can't just have a hard fact rule except not making it political, so that's why each area has something.
Well, and it might not be in our rental agreement, but we have it on a, like booths, booths that's set up for things. So certainly that can be reviewed.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at it for sure.
Yeah, because I, I, I don't know if it's in.
With that, please be respectful at these events and, and, you know, not, um, slanted it either one way, like these events that, uh, you know, for everybody.
So the consensus is you will not allow political events?
It seems that that would be what we would need to do.
On a case-by-case basis, Gary.
Yeah, Mr.? I'm just kidding. If I could not be here for a second, I wasn't prepared to answer this question, but, but, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But I am sort of, but I think the city allows political events, particularly if it's a situation where there are certain people approved or don't approve it, it gets, it'd be considered a violation of a law. I mean, I, I just, I think you can ban any political event. They can't stop somebody from walking through your camp as, as a person, the sign that says vote for me. But you can't approve, you can't approve anything else unless you let everybody. And the problem with that is if only one person wants to come in and not everybody who say, well, these four people are city council, basically, example, all four of them, Jared, and, and, I mean, if all four of us didn't do it, it could be considered a HOZAC violation, even though the city would permit it. So I think you're going to go a lot of problems with that. And I just, I, my personal view is that cities should, as a general rule, should not do it. But depending upon what happens, it could be considered a violation of federal HOZAC, which prohibits a, um, a, an individual working for the government, something like that, too. And not everybody can, to, uh, put in the campaign anyway, um, which could be considered on government property or something like that. So I, I just think some of them should sit there.
And that's always a rule as an employee I've been known to follow. We can't wear a pin into the office with candidates on it or, you know, so, you know, promote it. I, and that could be a reason why we handle it case by case. Yes?
I would have thought that was a definitive engagement.
I just haven't read the packet, so I don't want to speak out in turn. Any other questions? If you wouldn't mind, Joey Newbauer couldn't make it tonight, so I just have just a few quick updates for the downtown business district.
Thank you, it was a great question.
You have the agenda in front of you. We are still in conversation with the cooperation agreement. We hope that that's something that we can work with the city on to set up the iWork Business License and begin developing Business Improvement District. So, um, I think the ball's in your court. The Business Committee meeting is September eighteenth. Vito's Tea House at twenty-five West Fayette Street is sponsoring the Business Committee meeting. And since last meeting, we were able to appoint Amy at Vito's, uh, Heinzick maybe, Stephanie Vigoda and Christina Agostini. So we still need two members for our Business Committee, so we encourage you to participate if you're a business. If you want to host a meeting, reach out and we'll have the meeting at your business. We have preliminary drafts of the Business Improvement District. We're hoping that the city does support our efforts in creating the bid. The Main Street Matters Grant was submitted, so that grant was submitted at the end of August. We should know by summertime if it's awarded. What that is, is a condition assessment for the downtown area where a consultant, we would have to solicit services, but a consultant would come in, review the downtown area and determine what, uh, recommendations, improvements and things like that. We are working on our annual report and we hope to have that to you in December, which is just, uh, you know, a review of what we did the year. Tim informed me that that is something under the municipal authority that we should do, so we're doing that. And at the Planning Commission, September tenth, there's a scenic byway designation. So that'll be presented to the Planning Commission that's, uh, proposed to be Main Street and Beeson. And that recommendation would come in front of the board. Any questions on the downtown business district? Okay. My email's director@uniontownredevelopment.com if you have any other questions.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you, Director.
We have an engineering report. Public Works?
All right, good evening, everyone. Just to start the report here, I'll give the total sewage collection for the month and year-to-date total. Uh, this month, it was two hundred thirty-two thousand forty-six dollars and thirty cents, bringing the year-to-date total to one million seven hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. For the Sewage Department, uh, they still continue to do lawn pickup on Fridays and, uh, we've been, had a couple digs go on here, but it wasn't anything we couldn't handle. They also still continue to manage and operate the compost site. Even if the machine isn't up and running because there isn't an income of material so much, there's still a daily operation to keep up with the site and keep it manageable for the residents to come in and dump in the other, uh, businesses that use the site. For the Street Department, uh, they've been still out tackling potholes, they've been asphaltin' and they've been, uh, cleaning alleys and different drains around the area. Uh, I know a lot of the drains are full still from winter and it's a never-ending battle to keep them clean. That way the roadways, the waterways can, uh, escape off the road there. Other than that, I don't really have anything else, so anybody have any questions or anything? I'll have, thanks.
Thanks, John. Fire Department Chief Kwan?
Okay, uh, good evening, everybody. Report for our activity for the month of August, twenty twenty-five, always start out with our incidents. Busy month for us, especially on fire-related incidents. We had nineteen fire-related incidents. These included one building fire, three kitchen fires confined to the stovetop, two scorched burns but the fire failed to ignite, four smoke conditions but the fire failed to ignite, five trash fires, one passenger vehicle fire, three vegetation or woods fires, and, uh, one over-pressurized, uh, mechanical equipment with the fire out on arrival. So as I always say, aside from that one building fire, we had several other. So as I always say, aside from that one building fire, we had several other close calls, though unfortunately, uh, ball landed in our favor. So. Uh, had thirty-two rescue-related incidents. These included twenty motor vehicle accidents, five of those had injuries, fifteen no injuries. Uh, we had three lockout gain access incidents for the EMS crews into, uh, commercial buildings. We had, uh, six exification of an ill or injured, uh, victim from a building where we assisted EMS crews getting them out, packaging. Uh, had one below-grade rescue and two elevator rescues. Ten hazardous conditions incidents. These included one flammable gas, two natural gas leaks, uh, three carbon monoxide incidents, three power lines down, one arcing short-sorted electrical equipment incident. Uh, we had twelve service-related incidents. These included, uh, three persons in distress, one lockout, four water leaks, one assist the police department, and the three general public service incidents. Uh, twelve fire alarm activations, and we did five drills witnessed, um, in public facilities. And as we always do, building familiar station for our crews, pre-incident planning, um, and we do a fire prevention training for the facility staff. Uh, if anybody, as I always say, has a commercial occupancy that you would like to have a drill witnessed and have your staff trained, please get ahold of us down at the central fire station. Uh, training conducted or taken by personnel for the month. Uh, department had over seventy-eight point five man-hours of training for the month of August. Uh, still pretty good. I know August is busy with, uh, a lot of people off on vacation, but still had good numbers. So pretty proud of our guys. As far as apparatus updates, nothing major. Our engine number four is going to be due for, uh, PA state vehicle inspection coming here by the end of October. Um, uh, I had reported last month on the new batteries. We had, uh, purchased batteries and put them in, put them in in-house for our engine number four. Uh, beyond that, I don't really have any, uh, major apparatus updates. Uh, it's just for some miscellaneous things. As I always say, the department's been very busy. It's, we're really busy all year, but especially in the summer with our outreach, our community events, PR, community risk reduction activities, things of that nature. Uh, we had a lot of those going on. Uh, one of the big ones was the Italian Festival. We took apparatus up there and put it on a display every day. Uh, went really well. So. And again, if you have a group that would like a program or something along those lines that we just reported to, again, seven two four, four three eight, six nine zero zero, so kind of getting those plugs in. So please give us a call. Um, just last but not least, as, as you all know, it's Thursday night. Uh, doors are open over there right now. Bingo starts, uh, game start at six forty-five. And that's about it. So, thank you.
Chief, the two elevator rescues.
Yes, sir.
Is this, uh, mechanical issues?
Uh, generally they are, yeah. Most of the time they are.
Is it different, different locations, same location?
Yeah, we have various locations. We, we run several of those throughout the year. We do. So, and, and generally it's, it's mechanical failure. Um, unfortunately for the poor person stuck inside, you know?
Yeah.
Could probably be a little scary, I'm sure, you know, until we get there and get them out.
Do we have any structures in the city that are, are, uh, a regular call for?
I mean, there's a couple that we get more than nod. I don't really want to come out on a public forum and say, but I mean, I can let you know which ones they, which ones they are.
If you could be in direct contact with, with our code enforcement, I'd like to make sure that we have that over there too.
Yeah, absolutely. We can do that. That's, that's easy. Not a problem. Yep. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Police, Chief DeWitt.
Good evening, everyone. I will be brief because it is very warm in here. It's been a long evening at this point. So during the month of August, the Union Town Police Department responded to seven hundred and forty-eight calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls included fourteen vehicle accidents, four assaults, three frauds, twenty welfare checks, thirty domestics, six assist fire calls, fifteen disorderly conducts, twenty-three warrant services, twenty-three emergency medical assists, nineteen assists other police agencies, eighteen harassments, one shots fired, twenty-two alarms, twenty thefts, four public intoxications. This number's a little bit, uh, a spike, which is why I included it. We had four sexual assaults this last month, which, uh, require a very large amount of investigation. Uh, fourteen unwanted persons, ninety-seven suspicious persons, activities or vehicles, and four burglaries. Officers made a total of thirty-three criminal arrests, issued forty-seven non-traffic citations and thirty-five traffic citations. We conducted, uh, vehicle foot patrols in the city parks and trails. Um, thank you for the vote in making a move to get these signs and rules posted in our city parks. That will be to a benefit of our officers being able to enforce, uh, some of the, the newer ordinances that have passed. And will give us some teeth at action to help clean up some of the problems we are seeing in some of our parks, especially after hours. Last but not least, obviously, school was started, so please be cognizant, uh, earlier in the morning on your way to and from work. Aimed in the afternoon obviously there, but there will be a lot more students out. The city's predominantly serviced by students that walk to school. So be very cognizant, even though they may see you, they may not stop, uh, before crossing the street. So please use a fair amount of caution and please, if the bus lights are flashing, the stop sign is out, make sure you stop. If not, we will be paying a visit to your residence and that fine is very expensive. Thank you all. Any questions? Sorry.
Chief, just a quick comment. Um, I didn't get your exact amount of, um, calls, but I put down seven hundred and fifty calls this month. So.
Seven forty-eight.
Seven forty-eight. So we're, we're, we're doing a little less if we go by every month. We're doing eighty-five hundred calls a, a year. And that's, you can see that our police department's awful busy at all times.
Yeah, we're extremely busy. Uh, we average on, on average for a year is about nine thousand calls for service. Um, and right now, we're doing that with three officers short on the roster from what we're complemented on our staffing.
I think the public should know that too. So be patient, but we're getting our job done. I, I know that.
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
Okay.
If you could, Chief, could you address the traffic situation in front of Ben Franklin School for this year?
So.
And talk about right at the intersection of, of Judith as well.
Yeah, so what we've been, this was a, a topic every year I bring up to school administrators, um, and school police recently. We've actually discussed this pretty heavily. Um, I think we're all aware at one point or another, there was a business that's possibly going in there, which triggered a lot more, um, secondary conversation on what happened. So obviously, um, in the afternoon portion, um, there's a pickup line for students and there's two separate times for those pickup lines. Uh, one of the things, we have Rob, who's our street painter. Once he was getting caught up on the intersections he's on now. My intent is to have him push those back, I believe, Tim, to thirty feet, twenty-five or thirty feet. I'd have to look at the state law. Don't hold me to that. The intent is to paint those zones back farther. Um, what we did last year, I, fortunately for me, I get to enjoy that pickup line as a parent to pick my two children up. So I know how much of a pain that is, whether you're in it or you're driving or you're trying to cross the street or not. So we intend, once we get that pushed back, to really start to enforce that. Now, the conversation has been carried with the district and I think we're going to have to take some action from the city side about looking at changing the pickup line to a safer location off of Morgantown Street. But there's a much bigger plan that would have to occur. I think we'd have to flip an alley to the flow of traffic, uh, because it's a one-way now, to mitigate some of the problem up there. It is its own issue. Um, and I think when we go to do that, we should probably look at a traffic study for our school zones to make sure we can get them reposted and done properly with the correct signage, because right now currently we have inoperable signs up there. They've been inoperable since I worked, started here in City Union Town fifteen years ago. So all pressing matters, I, I agree. Um, we are making steps to mitigate some of those. Um, some of those are going to have to come with a more formal plan to get done.
And if, and if I could just add to, please be respectful when you're pulling up there to those intersections. Be respectful of the people or the stop signs and pulling out. You know, we've had some really close calls and we've actually had some, you know, vehicle, uh, actions there. You know, it, it's just very important to be able to work together. Uh, so if, you know, we're, I'm asking and I know we, we, the city's asking for the, you know, residents' cooperation in this to make that area a safer place.
Yeah, and one of the other things that I can tell you, I, I see it regularly, is, uh, it is illegal in all aspects to block someone's driveway. So try not to do that. Right?
Are you getting applications for your openings?
Applications for the police department. So as it currently sits, we have one applicant who's currently enrolled in the police academy. So long and the short, no, we're not getting applica- applicants at this point. Any other questions? Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Um, before we get to public comment, just have a couple more things I'd like to say. Um, number one, I know we passed the, uh, approved Nemecolin, had Nemecolin Days at Bailey Park on September eighteenth from two to six, and that's a really good event. And I want to thank Nemecolin for taking their time to putting this together. And a special thanks to Joe Walkus to coordinate all, all of these progr- all, all of this event. And, um, try to make it down, you don't have to stay between two and six, but there's going to be a softball game between Nemecolin and the City of Union Town. And I don't think we won a softball game yet, but Joe Walkus is, um, telling me that we're going to have a nice chance this year. So come on down. It's nice to get around and see, see your neighbors and make some new friends, but that's, that's always a good event. And, um, one more thing I'd like to talk about, I see we have a, a resignation at the Parks and Board, um, Committee. So if you're interested, put a, uh, a, um, letter of intent to the city clerk and see if you're interested in doing something like that. We'll consider all applicants. That's all I have. If anyone has anything, uh, Councilman Billy?
So I wanted to wait to the end of the meeting so we can review the profit and loss of the year. Uh, you know, right now, as of September, we have brought in two million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars, fourteen cents in tax revenue. And that tax revenue is generated through our housing stock. Uh, you know, we are budgeting, we had budgeted about three point four million, so we're sitting about eighty-one percent right now. Uh, again, to the departments, that's why it's very important to crunch down. Uh, again, thanks for, you know, the dedication this year on keeping these expenditures down, but this month we creeped over the hundred thousand mark. So if we can just be mindful of what we're spending and also very mindful of the inventory that we have, that it doesn't improperly get used. So total revenue that we have brought in year to date, we brought in five million, forty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars, thirty-three cents. Uh, we are sitting about eighty-three percent right now of what we planned, uh, budget-wise. Uh, our budget for this year was six million, forty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, seventy-six cents. So, you know, we're, we are running right now at about a million, three, under budget. So it's really important that we continue this line. Okay? We, you know, three contracts that we have to negotiate, that is going to be chewing up a lot of the retained revenue that we've held on to. And plus the, the future projects that we need, the numerous sewer projects that we want to, we want to do. Police Department, uh, thank you guys. Uh, Chief, you're doing a really good job. You are sitting, uh, at about a million, two, under budget. Now, I expect that that will quickly, uh, get chewed up with orders that we have coming up before we close down on the orders. Uh, Fire Department, thank you guys. Uh, you are sitting about six hundred and fifty-nine thousand and some change under budget. And I am aware that we do have probably some costly repairs that'll be coming up after inspections. So if we can just control every little, if we can just pinch them, pinch every little bit, that's going to help. I did see some areas, uh, in sewage supplies that were over. I feel like we're improperly managing those supplies. And I would ask that the, the director of that, uh, department to get a better handle on that and make sure that we have those. And, uh, you know, before I close out, I just want to say that I'm getting ready to finish eight years sitting here, uh, and twelve. So I took a little break. But in these eight years, I might have to tell you that two weeks ago has pressed the, the limit. Okay? And I, just the disappointment, the extreme disappointment that I have for the leadership in this city and what you try very hard to, uh, make good things accomplish. And in and out, we have people coming in here and before they get on and they talk about what they're going to do. But when they get here and the opportunity presents themselves, we fall. It's either idiocracy. Okay? So, uh, I understand that it's personnel matters and that we should not talk about personnel matters. But I'm going to have to tell you this, in any other business, and that's what the city is, in any other business, the individual would have exhausted their employment. But in the City of Union Town, that's not the case. And I am very sad to say that and I'm very extremely disappointed.
Do you feel like more deeper, deeper what you're saying to, like, um, like, you can see the, 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 like, what you guys are talking about?
Well, so as, as it relates to personnel matter, we just want to discuss that in the next session, if you guys wanted to.
I'm, I'm sure everybody at the table is aware of the situation that happened. And a, a lot of people in the public are as well, because I had a lot of people come to me and talk about it. But I couldn't be the one to sit here and talk about personnel issues. Uh, the exact people. But I'm going to point out the people, the director of those departments.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and that director knows who that individual is as well. It's not you, because you're doing a great, you do a great job. I have to say, you're, you're, you, you do control the spending. I, I know that I had said that I wished that we would spend earlier in the year, but, you know, and I appreciate it. And I do appreciate what you do. We don't always agree and that's okay, but I appreciate what you do.
Well, in, in defense, that's the funding will be recruited. That's, the funding will come back from us.
Oh, yeah. That, I understand that. I understand that situation. But the other situation is deeply saddening. It is, um, just an extreme dereliction of duty. And that person should step off. But that's what I think. You know, I, I, I tell you, we, we, you know, I can't tell you, my blood pressure today is probably through the roof. I got a little ringing in my ear. Okay? I, I come to this with all heart and soul for the betterment of everybody. And then when we have these decisions that get made like this, it's, it's just no good. No good. You know? People would, I wonder if people would start asking if we actually all live in the city. You know, do we all live in the city here? Do we all have, you know, because you could look at where our residency is. You can see where we live. You can see, you can catch, uh, uh, financial disclosures. You could see how much debt we have, how much property we own and what interest we have in it, you know? And I think clearly, sitting back for two years, clearly I've seen where people are at. And I definitely see, uh, in decisions that we have done, especially getting into something that's extremely important that we got into with the redevelopment authority, and that's with the landlord agreement, I think it shows, truly shows that, you know, that the dissent on that, it, I really show. And I hope I'm really, just really digging in and really, people on the outside, because I know that some of the people here, they film me, but really, I really hope that people that are watching really, um, they start asking questions. Because I know, you know, I'm somebody that has had numerous right-to-nose done on them at their work. Numerous, numerous. From people that are on council with me, you know, and I feel like it's just not good. But then we say we're going to act a certain way and then the opportunity presents itself and we, we, we just let down. I'm completely let down.
I take you can elaborate on this issue, Rob, so.
No. No, I'm bringing it up all the way around the bush. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm painting you guys a big enough window. It's open. You can go right through it. You just got to ask the right questions.
Anyone else have anything in council? Thank you, Mr. Billy.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Um, this time is for public comment. We give a three-minute time period for, to make the comments. Hold on a minute, Mr. Ringer. I, um, just be, uh, consider of everyone's time. I, I guess, Mr. Ringer, you want to speak?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Take the podium, sir.
Hi, thanks. I will be brief. Uh, I do not live in the border of Union Town. I'm about six, seven, eight blocks north of Union Town. But I travel through Union Town daily. And in the last three weeks, I've encountered incidents involving, uh, the scooters with the e, e-bikes. Scooters, uh, bikes, other type of devices. Three times in the last two weeks, I've almost hit people. Now, I don't know if there are any kind of rules, regulations to require lighting on those vehicles or require, uh, wearing a vest of that nature, but somebody's going to get hurt. They're going on the sidewalks, coming off the sidewalks and going directly into. They're going on the sidewalks, coming off the sidewalks, and going directly into the streets. Just, you know, other cities have this problem. When I lived in Chicago, I had to have a front and rear light on my bicycle. I rarely see that here. I don't know if that's a state issue or a city issue, but I think something needs to be happening. Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Ringer.
Any other public comment?
We actually have some information we're going to be posting here on that, so that's a good, good topic that you brought up there, so.
Jack?
Good evening, everyone. Jack Swesnick. I live on Montview Street in the City of Union Town. Just a quick comment, okay? What we don't need in the city is divisiveness. That's what we don't need. Even with Story Square, I think we can all come together and say it's for the betterment of the community, right? Whether it's a redevelopment authority issue, a council issue, whatever the case may be, right? I think we all need to come together to make it work for the community. That, that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you, Jack. Any other comments this evening? If not, that's all I have, Tim.
We will close with our last agenda item, the resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve, to meet next on Thursday, October 2nd, 2025, at 5:00 PM in City Council. Adjustment at 6:10 PM. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Eric Gert?
Yes, thank you all for your time.